Huh?
Lathan.
I wonder who's gonna speak? I've got speaker cards.
You don't have them yet?
I do.
Oh, we do.
It's business.
Pretty good. What is it, Mr. Speaker?
I don't know.
I don't.
Kitchen.
It is seven o'clock. We have a call, City Council meeting in order. First item on the agenda is the invocation given by myself and then we had a special presentation of our pledge about the American and Texas flag, which will be presented by our Boy Scouts America Troop 9168. Most gracious God Almighty, we pause to give you thanks, to give you thanks, honor, and glory. We thank you for loving us each and every day. We thank you for giving us the many wonderful blessings that you give us. We thank you for the simple things. We thank you for the rain, for the sun, for our moon and stars. We thank you for our freedom that we have here in this country, here in the city of Lewisville. We thank you for blessing us and watching over and loving us despite of our shortcomings. We thank you for always being there for us. Thank you for never abandoning us in spite of things that we do. Thank you for your unconditional love. We ask your special blessing on us tonight as we meet here to remember that we are here to listen to everyone's opinion, everyone's voice, and hear them as they speak, and realize that their thoughts are just as important as ours, each and every one of us. We're all neighbors. We're all friends. We ask that you give us the courage and wisdom to accept that fact. We ask that you give a special blessing on those who are sick, on those who are going through trauma in their lives, and those who are oppressed. We ask your special blessing on those who fight each and every day of their life to provide us freedom, honor, and truth. We ask all this. In your son's most holy name, we pray. Amen. Would you gentlemen all please come forward down here to the front if you would, and then we will have you lead us in the pledges. If you'll just come all the way forward and line up down through here. I want everyone to get a good view of you. Just kind of spread out through here. Somebody's in charge. I can show that. I like that. Well, you know what's really nice? Not only is it nice to sit up here and see all these fine young gentlemen here, but what's also nice is to look out there and see the smiles on your faces because you're looking at these young gentlemen. Gentlemen, would you lead us in the pledges?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Let's give these young men a fine round of applause. And I'm gonna ask you, stay up here. Don't leave yet. I've got something special I want to do for you here.
You jumping the gun, kitchen?
Could I ask all scoutmasters to come forward to this time, please? If anyone else that intends with this troop or this organization exists, we'd like to get out of here. These are mascots. They're celebrating a very unique milestone here in the city of Lewisville. And this troop is celebrating their 25th anniversary here in Lewisville. Thank you all so much. As you can see, there's a lot of people over the last 25 years that have been involved in this and helped raising fine young men to be members of our society in the past 25 years. And we thank each and every one of you, and we congratulate each and every one of you for all the work you've done. With that, I'll read this proclamation. This proclamation is, "Whereas Boy Scouts in 2013, Boy Scouts of America Troop 9168 is celebrating the 25th anniversary of its founding. And whereas the scouting movement has been preparing young men to become leaders since Sir Robert Baden Powell founded the movement in Great Britain in 1908. And whereas, under the leadership of Scoutmaster Leo Perron, the troop currently counts over forty scouts among its members. Moreover, Troop 9168 has produced fifty-two Eagle Scouts and has participated in marriage services projects such as flag ceremonies, Memorial Day, numerous activities performed on behalf of schools in the city, in the city of Lewisville, and other organizations. And whereas, Boy Scout Troop 9168 has for twenty-five years made a significant difference in the lives of countless young men while contributing to the betterment of Lewisville and the surrounding area, it's a pleasure, it is a pleasure to join in recognizing this momentous milestone in the group's rich history. Now therefore, I, Dean Euclid, Mayor of the city of Lewisville, on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby congratulate Boy Scouts of America Troop 9168 on its 25th anniversary of its founding and commend its members and leaders, both past and present, and all those who have worked to support this fine organization during its twenty-five years of service to the community, proclaiming this 15th day of July 2013." Mr. Perron, if I could have you come forward. You'd like to say a few words and say a little something about some of the people that have helped make this possible over the years?
Sure.
Why not? Wasn't prepared for this, and in the last year, I've gotten used to this, I guess. The fine men you see here to the right, to the left, they're the backbone of the troop, the boys. We have a saying in Boy Scouts, it's a boy-led troop. So really, you see a lot of the mentors on the wings, but the heart and soul of the troop are the boys here in the middle. They lead it. And so if you see the boys out in the community, what they're doing is a lot of what the boys have wanted to do. They voted on it. This is something that's on their agenda to do. So service projects that are out in the community they're doing isn't just because adults ask them to go do it. It's something that the boys want to do themselves. So these boys are, there's a lot of Eagles, and these boys are something special. So I'm proud to be a part of it.
Anyone else? Any other past master that'd like to have anything to say? Okay, let's all kind of crowd in here a little bit and where we get our picture. Well, we got news media. I think this ought to go on the news. Can we get that, can we get that commitment from you to put this on the news? I think we should. Right every day, there's twenty-five. Good. All right, we got it. I think that's something that'd be awesome to have our members. Here, I'm gonna let you hold this up. This is a good live shot. Be on TV later tonight. Let's give these young men a fine round of applause. Well, thank all of you, and we just want you to know that it's people like you that make the commitment in your life to help others in this community to know what it is like to be a Boy Scout of America, the one, great, only, United States. Thank you and God bless you. Thank you very much. It's really nice to see we have such a big turnout, such an interest in our North Texas metroplex area for this wonderful scout troop. We'll be able to see it on TV later tonight. I'm just excited about that. Okay, now we've got a special welcome that we want to do in swearing in and accommodation of our board members, board and commission members that we have just appointed for the coming year. If you will, as I call your name, if you'll come forward, I have you a certificate, and then if you'll stay up here, we're gonna do a swearing in and get a picture of everyone all at one time. Okay? I'm just gonna read the name and the position they've been appointed to. Greg Tierney is with Animal Services Advisory Committee. Craig Roberts, Arts Advisory Board. Brenda Crawford, Arts Advisory Board. Brenda's my neighbor. She's not Mr. Rodney. Lathan Watts. You have two, actually. Lathan is also serving on the Arts Advisory Board and the Tax Imcrement Reinvestment Zone Number Two Board of Directors. Thank you, Lathan. Good to see you back there. Lathan's a former council member. That's fairly people, former council member. Peggy Ackerson to Arts Advisory Board. Tamla Vui. Tamla also serving on two committees, the Tax Imcrement Reinvestment Zone Number One Board of Directors and the Community Development Block Grant.
Thank you very much, Tamla, for all you do.
Sarah McLean, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. Steve Hill, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. R.L. Crawford, Lewisville Housing Finance Corporation. I think you're married to that woman that's my neighbor, aren't you?
No.
Thank you, sir. Bill Peck. And Bill is also serving on two committees, Tax Imcrement Reinvestment Zone Number One Board of Directors and the O-Town Design Review Committee.
Thank you for all the work you do, Bill. We appreciate it, sir.
Kelly Stokes, Tax Imcrement Reinvestment Zone Number One Board of Directors. Michael Benner, Tax Imcrement Reinvestment Zone Number Two Board of Directors. Oh, that's Michelle.
That's okay.
My wife would shoot me. I'm so sorry. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you. Charles Emery, and he is serving on two boards, Lewisville Housing Finance Corporation and Lewisville Industrial Development Corporation.
Thank you, Charles, for all you did.
Charles also former council member. Mr. Steve Griffin, Lewisville Industrial Development Corporation. We've got a lot of former council members serving on our board. Sure it's nice to see they don't leave. Toby Faber, Library Board, place five. James Tucker, the third. Mr. Tucker? Sharon Ellis, O-Town Design Review Committee. Richard Orpeza. Richard's on the park board. Callie Browning, also on the park board. Alvin Turner, Planning and Zoning Commission. And Mary Ellen Mitska. And Michael Pope to the park board. Now, is there anyone else here that we didn't call? Want to make sure somebody didn't sneak in. We tried to catch you at the door. Is no one else here? Yes. Yes, come on up, Bill. Do we have his certificate, Bill Watson, for arts? We'll get it for you right quick. Sorry we missed you at the board. We'll get you. Like I said, these are our board and commission members for the upcoming year, and I can assure you that when I say this, I'm not speaking for just myself, but I'm speaking for our entire city council and our entire staff. We could not do this without their help, their participation and commitment to the community. They attend a lot of different meetings. As you heard, we have a lot of different committees, boards, and commissions that they attend. Then they turn around, and then they come back and give advice to the city council as to what their beliefs are. So it's just another way for us to keep in touch with all the different citizens. So at this time, let's give them a big round of applause and say thank you. We truly do appreciate everything that you do. Appreciate the many hours that you commit away from your family to this community to make it a better place to live. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Julie, and she's gonna swear you in.
So I'll just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. And solemnly swear faithfully, executing the duty of the office, of state your place, of the state your board, of the state of Lewisville, state of Texas, and will to the best, of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States, and of this state, and the charter and ordinance of this city. And I furthermore, solemnly swear that I have not directly, that I have indirectly paid, offered, or promised to pay, contributed, nor promised to contribute, any money or valuable thing, or promise, any public office, or employment, as a reward, to secure my appointment, to help me God. So I have to, congratulations.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. No, thank you.
Thank you.
It's just sad that that's the best, the kind thing to do is to film this type of thing. This is the most important thing facing this community.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Visitor Citizens Forum. At this time, any person with business before the city council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Did not have any cards filled out. No one asked to speak. Next item's Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Did not have any cards submitted and did not have a councilperson to ask to have anything pulled. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve the consent agenda, a second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna take things a little bit out of order tonight on the agenda. Next item's number seven is a tabled item, consideration of a variance to Lewisville City Code Section 6-123, multi-family and non-residential landscaping requirements for the proposed CVS pharmacy located at Lot 4, Block B of the NEC 1171 in Valley Parkway Edition, Phase 1, as requested by Michael Doggett of Winkleman and Associates, Inc., on behalf of the owner. The subject site is a 1.364 acre lot, zone general business located at the northeast corner of Main Street and Valley Parkway. A CVS pharmacy plans to demolish the existing Chevron gas station and construct a new building. In lieu of providing the required landscape strip, the property owner is proposing to install a two-foot-wide landscape buffer containing shrubs and crape myrtle trees along Valley Parkway. Increase landscaping along Main Street and donate $5,000 to the city of Lewisville's Tree Mitigation Fund. This item was tabled at the city council meeting on July 1, 2013 in order to allow CVS an opportunity to evaluate provision of the full 10-foot landscape strip by reduced parking access along Valley Parkway. Recommendations that council approve the variance set forth in the above caption. I will state that I was the one that asked this to be tabled simply because I would prefer us not do a simple two-foot, that's about two-foot of landscaping. I'd prefer, much rather prefer the 10-foot. And that's all I'll say about that. And I'll turn it over to you, Councilman Durham.
Mayor, I'll be in support of this, and if there's nothing else, I move to approve.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. She just told me we have a speaker here. I'm sorry, Councilman Durham. Michael Doggett. Did you want to speak, sir? Were you here just to answer questions?
Just here to answer questions.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, that's all right. If you want, does anybody have any questions they want to?
Representing CVS?
Yes. If you want to give your name and address for the record, please, sir. If you would, pull that microphone back around. I forgot to do that, please.
Michael Doggett with Winkleman Associates, 6750 Hillcrest Plaza Drive, Suite 325, Dallas, Texas, 75230.
Do you, Council, have any questions, Mr. Doggett?
Mr. Doggett?
Sure.
I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around 67, 75 parking spots for a CVS. When I, I've actually had a great vacation here about two weeks ago through Boston, and you know, CVSs were all over the place and had no parking. So I'm wondering why there's not a middle ground here for us.
Sure, there's, there's a different market for Boston and the northeast versus south and Texas, and we all drive bigger vehicles here in Texas, and obviously the, the.
But we have bigger parking spots here, too.
We do have bigger parking spots. We have, we have more convenient parking, and I think that's, CVS is really driving home the convenient parking for handicap, elderly, ill, folks that need to park closer to the front door. And that's, again, that's another reason why we're asking for the variances to have those.
And you have a drive-through?
I'm sorry?
You have a drive-through on the CVS?
Yes, we do, on the back corner on the northeast side.
Is that, would you say that's pretty convenient?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, the council?
This seems like an odd question, but curious. Out of the 12,900 square feet in the store, how much of that space is actually retail space, and how much is, you know, warehouse, storage?
Approximately 10,000 square feet of retail space.
Okay.
And then the other, the rest of it would be considered storage.
Okay.
Any other question?
I do have a question, Mayor. Reading the, the letter sent to the city on behalf of your organization, it pretty clearly states that you want to move, you want to relocate, close the current location that you have, and if you are not able to find a location that you're gonna close anyway and, and leave the city. Is that accurate?
My understanding is that, excuse me, that the lease is, is over in late 2014. They're actively, they've been actively searching for a property. This is it. This is the corner they, they need to be on, is what their, their market research shows.
Great, great location, great corner for y'all, kitty corner from where you're at now with great visibility.
And the other store doesn't have a drive-through, it's, it's, it's gonna be closed. And they want to reinvest in Lewisville, and I, we hope that Lewisville wants to reinvest with CVS, and, and just appreciate your approval tonight to do so. Parallel parking, or, sorry, angled parking drives a one-way route as well, which becomes inconvenient, too.
Understood. The main entrance, it appears, is gonna be on the southwest corner of the lot.
Correct.
And...
To enhance appearance to the...
So we still have the entire Main Street, both sides of that parking lot, against the building on the far west portion, and the far southwest corner, still pretty convenient. Okay. That's all the questions I have, Mayor.
I have a couple, since you've talked, you know, you talked about the parallel parking, you're making it almost sound like that's the only parking you're gonna have, and we're not talking about that, actually, you'd have 50 other spaces, I believe, for just standard parking, correct?
Right.
And we're only talking about maybe 14, 15, and then you, so you'd end up having six or seven that were parallel parking. Do you, do you go to CVS very often?
Absolutely.
How many cars do you usually see parked in a CVS parking lot?
Again, it's not that we're intending to fill up the entire parking lot with cars. Obviously, we would love that. I think CVS would love that because it drives up retail sales, which is essential to the city of Louisville. I think what we're trying to see is, though, convenient parking to the front door, and parallel spaces or angled spaces just don't achieve that.
But these are not removed, or not by the front door, and there'd be 50 other spaces that'd be parked right there by the front door. You could design it so they could be right there by the front door.
We would actually...
Especially your handicap parking.
And I'll drive this, just this point home, is that, in the letter that we detailed to y'all, was that we don't have the ability to shift the building to the east because there's a use restriction with Albertson's that prohibits pharmacies. So our building's orientated where it can be. Typically, we like three rows of parking in the front with a head-in, head-out, floating-row parking. That's not, obviously not achievable here, and we would love to provide the additional landscaping and the parking, but in this case, we just can't with this uniquely shaped property. So this is what we can provide, and, you know, it's not a financial-driven decision, it's obviously because we're wanting to provide and put money into a tree mitigation fund as well.
I've just never seen more than 10, maybe maximum 15 cars parked in a CVS parking lot at any one time, any CVS store in the Metroplex area, and it amazes me that you think you couldn't exist with, say, 55, 57 versus 67, when I don't, I think you would admit you'll never use all of them at one time, you'll never have that many in there.
Depending on...
Pretty good profitability. Plus, there's a parking lot right now that's right adjacent to this property, I mean, but upright against it, that is used by the current owner of the filling station. So it's just my concern that the beautification of the city is something that I think is very important to the citizens here, and a two-foot-wide landscape is just, doesn't offer much beautification for the city.
We were able to negotiate four additional shared spaces from Albertson's that got us to the number of 67. Three of the spaces in that 67 is also made up from drive-through stacking spaces, which is allowed by code. So technically, it's only 60 spaces, it's not. And that's, and that's still low for CVS's standards, we understand that, it's high for what you may perceive, but it's also, again, if there's the perception that there's open spaces and it's not full lot, then it's more convenient to the customer.
Okay.
At peak, how many spaces do you think you'll routinely see being used?
How many spaces will we routinely see being used?
At peak?
At a peak, any peak time. I apologize, I don't have a traffic study or a parking study done for this site. I mean, we've, CBS has some and has done some in the past, I don't know what that information would be for this particular store.
So this number's not actually based on any specific...
It's based on national, on national amounts of what they believe is a convenient number for their, for them to operate successfully.
Okay, but it's not based on any specific research to this location?
No, sir.
Okay, we've had enough discussion. Councilman Durham, I believe you made a motion to approve this presented, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have a second? Hear no second, motion dies. Entertained another motion?
Mayor?
Mayor, I'd like to make some comment on this. I can't believe we're sitting up here questioning CVS, nationwide drugstore operator, about the numbers, parking spots that they think they need at their store. I really can't believe that we're talking about that, and questioning why they do business that way. I've never heard this from any other place that we talked about not putting in enough parking spots in there. We're usually asking for more than they ever wanted. As far as I know, this is the first time it's ever come up at the council level. Does staff know of any others?
I can't think of any.
He's not gonna get involved in it.
I can't think of any, to be honest with you.
I just can't believe that we're, you've been talking about this that way. If you don't want to do it, then don't do it, don't give the variance, I guess that leaves that they just won't build it. If they think in their business model that they need to have 67 spots, for whatever reason, maybe it's a buy-sell-leaseback, that the people who are buying it want to have it, I don't know.
Or it could be that they would go ahead and build it with the landscape there and a modified parking plan, as a, some other cases, one thing that we did, I can remember, wasn't parking, but it was actually the facade and makeup of the building, was a Walmart out on 3040, and they came in and wanted to build a different Walmart and put up signs and this and that, and we said, "No, if you look at what you're building in the cities around us," i.e. it was Plano at the time, Highland Village, other cities, "We want you to build a nicer-looking Walmart here in Louisville, too." And so we declined it, we declined it.
CVS is a CVS.
Right, and they declined it, they built it.
I really don't know where we're going with all this.
I'm just saying that...
This isn't gonna make this a worse store by having a 10-foot deal, that we're trying to get rid of that right now because of the water restrictions. We're telling people they can't water, so we're asking for more landscape. I really have a problem with all that, and I don't understand, as a council, where we're going with this.
Well, I, we have a tabled, tabled item tonight where we had an applicant that wanted to have a number of variances to their proposed plan, and we were on the verge of denying. We asked that applicant to go back, relook at their plan, we gave them some suggestions so we can move forward to still allow them to do business in the city of Louisville, that applicant, and this happens all the time, and these people, once we tell them that these are kind of the parameters that we want to follow, can you go back, make modifications to your plan, and come back to us and, and do business with us? And I think...
Yeah, and these people have come back and said...
No.
They need to have this many parking spots.
From what I can see is, we have a landscape plan, so those are our, that's, that's what we desire, that's what we need to keep our city going in the direction with the, with the way we want our city to look, and they're saying, "No, we want the city of Louisville to compromise the beautification of the city of Louisville because we can't modify our parking."
Agreed. So we, we turn it down, and we go on to the next one. Whether they build here or not, I don't know, but they said they're closing their other store. If we want to keep doing this on every remodel deal, rehabilitation project that comes up, then y'all just forget about doing anything on rehabbing stuff.
Well, we had that same conversation with the plaza down the street, and not going with the full stone, so, I mean, there, there's, there's negotiation and...
Negotiation, yes, but to question the business model that they're using in their stores, I can't, I can't believe this is even being done here on this deal. And we're talking about, they need less parking? That's never come up at this council level, needing less parking. We want them to have less parking than our requirements, and they're willing to make that deal, but they can't make it with the landscaping. We're giving up the business for eight feet of landscaping. That's all we're doing right here.
Well, I agree with you, I don't think I've ever seen it myself, in the situation where we are asking for them to provide less parking. I don't think I've ever seen it.
Entertained a motion?
Move to table.
Second.
Have a motion to table the item to what?
Next council meeting.
The next meeting. Have a motion to table item to next meeting?
Discussion, Mayor.
Wait a minute.
What are we asking to table for?
Wait just a minute.
What do we want them to do?
Wait just a minute, gotta see if I got it. Had a motion by Councilman Gilmore, and did, I thought I heard a second.
There was a second.
Second by, by Councilman Tierney. Okay, now for discussion.
Same question.
Thanks, sir.
What are we tabling it for? What are we asking them to come back with?
I would like to, by seconding that motion, I would like to ask CVS respectfully, seeing exactly, I don't know where he went, he's out there somewhere, by seeing exactly where we're at on the council, and kind of you're getting the direction where this thing may go, I would like to see CVS stay here in Louisville. Again, like I stated, I think that's a perfect location for you, kitty corner from where you're at, great visibility, and if we can have a good-looking, non-compromised, beautiful site location at one of our prime properties in the middle of our city, absolutely, I'm gonna see that thing go there. I'm just a little, little reluctant myself to compromise the beauty of one of our busiest intersections. So, again, I would, I would ask CVS to see if they can possibly rework their parking a little bit to make this deal work. I think the council has clearly spoken tonight, and I, and I'm assuming Councilman Gilmore and Ferguson would agree, that we do want that CVS pharmacy there. We would love to see that there. So I'm hopeful that CVS can come back and, and work with us a little closely, closer.
I, I will tell you that when, when I was asked and elected to be on this seat, a big driver from the community standpoint was upping the quality of what's here, and I think that this speaks right to that. We want to be able to up the quality, and as a town that is redeveloping, as a city that is an older city, and we didn't have the benefit of everybody else's mistakes first time through, I think, you know, you're only gonna get a few swings at this to be able to make the city what you want it to look like. So that's, you know, you know, however long they want to be here with a two-foot, and as far as the water restrictions and those types of things on, on the greenery, there's lots of ways to do that without spending a lot of money on water. You know, drive-by Phoenix, if we want to go that, go that route. So I'm more than happy to continue the conversation, and would like to see them bring something a little bit more to the table.
If I can, if they come back and say, "We can't do that, if we don't, if we have to build that deal and we don't get those parking spots, we're leaving." Is that what y'all want to have? Is that what you're gonna go?
That's not what I want to hear.
I know, I said, "Is that where you're gonna go when they come back?" If you say, "That's it, we don't want you here."
We don't need to discuss that.
Move to floor map.
We don't need to discuss that right now, because that's not what they said.
It's a question that may come up.
It, it may come up, that they want to leave the state of Texas and want to move to California, but we're not gonna address those things right now, we're gonna address this issue. We've had a motion and a second.
I can't believe this is happening.
And I understand, we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. 3-1. Item 8 is tabled item, consideration of four variances to the Louisville City Code Section 6-148, screening devices for outside storage, Section 6-103, access management policy, and Section 6-181, exterior finish requirements for a proposed recreational facility, a vehicle storage facility, and office building on Lot 10R, Block A of the Riverview Industrial Park Edition, as requested by Robert Schneenberg on behalf of the property owner. The subject site is 1.029 acre lot located on south of Stonewall Drive and west of Huffins Boulevard within the River Park industrial area. The applicant has requested that the item be tabled to the August 5th meeting in order to modify their plans per council direction. Councilman Tierney?
Move to approve their request for a table till the next meeting.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve the request tabled to August 5th meeting, and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 9 is consideration of declaring a vacancy in place number 2 of the Louisville Parks and Library Development Corporation in consideration of appointment to fill vacancy in place numbers 2 and 4 on the Louisville Parks and Library Development Corporation pursuant to no longer serving on Louisville City Council. Former Councilman John Grinna has submitted a letter of resignation for the Louisville Parks and Library Development Corporation. The articles of incorporation for this board state that the board directors be composed of seven persons appointed by the city council who are residents of the city, and that no more than four of seven members may be city employees, officers, or members of the city council. Currently, the members serving on this corporation are TJ Gilmore, John Grinna, Ken Judkins, Dean Euclid, Rudy Durham, and Doug Killow. When this corporation was first formed, the city council wanted to have four council members serve on the corporation. A roster of the corporation members has been prepared for city council review. Recommendation is that council members declare a vacancy in place number 3 on the Louisville Local Government Corporation and consider new appointments to fill vacancies in place number 3 and 4 on the Louisville Parks and Library Development Corporation, and consider new appointments to fill vacancies in place number 3 and 4 on the Louisville Parks and Library Development Corporation pursuant to no longer serving on Louisville City Council. Former Councilman John Grinna has submitted a letter of resignation for the Louisville Parks and Library Development Corporation. The articles of incorporation for this board state that the board directors be composed of seven persons appointed by the city council who are residents of the city, and that no more than four of seven members may be city employees, officers, or members of the city council. Currently, the members serving on this corporation are TJ Gilmore, John Grinna, Ken Judkins, Dean Euclid, Rudy Durham, and Doug Killow. When this corporation was first formed, the city council wanted to have four council members serve on the corporation, as well as a representative from the park board. At the June 3, 2012 meeting, council accepted the resignation of Jeff Paltier from place number four, who originally representing the park board due to serving as park board president. After July 11, 2013 meeting, the park board elected Robert Solite as chairman and Callie Browning as vice chairman. Both members are willing and interested in serving in place number four. Recommendation is that council declare a vacancy in place number 2 of the Louisville Parks and Library Development Corporation and consider new appointments to fill vacancies in place number 2 and 4 in the Louisville Parks and Library Development Corporation. Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I move to declare a vacancy in place number 2 and place number 4, and to appoint, and my apologies if I butchered the last name, Mr. Robert Solite as place 2, and Mr. Councilman Neil Ferguson, place 4.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore?
Second.
A second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10 is consideration of declaring a vacancy in place number 3 of the Louisville Local Government Corporation in consideration of appointment to fill the vacancy in place number 3 on the Louisville Local Government Corporation. Pursuant to no longer serving on the Louisville City Council, John Grinna has submitted a letter resigning from the Louisville Local Government Corporation in order that the original intention of having city council members serve on this board is maintained. Currently, the members serving on this corporation are R. Neil Ferguson, Dean Euclid, John Grinna, Rudy Durham, and Leroy Vaughn. The articles of incorporation for this board state that the board directors consist of five persons who are residents of the city of Louisville, shall be appointed by the city council, and that the board members may be members of the city council. When this corporation was first formed, the city council wanted to have five council members serve on this corporation. A roster of the corporation members has been prepared for city council review. Recommendation is that council members declare a vacancy in place number 3 on the Louisville Local Government Corporation and consider a new appointment to place number 3 on the Louisville Government Corporation. Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, that was...
Actually, Mayor, I'll go ahead and do that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'd like to move to declare a vacancy in place number 3 of the Louisville Local Government Corporation and to appoint to place 3. Councilman Greg Tierney?
Second.
Have a motion by, I'm sorry, Councilman Gilmore, and a second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11 is acknowledgement of receipt of the fiscal year 2013, 2014 proposed budget in consideration of public hearing for the budget and the proposed tax rate. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2013 and 14 has been prepared and submitted in accordance with Section 9.02 of the City Charter. The workshop session is scheduled for the August 3 at 8:30 a.m. The workshop will take place in the community room of the municipal annex. The city council is required to set a time and place for a public hearing on the budget when submitted. The date must be at least 15 days after the budget is filed with the city secretary and prior to the tax levy being set. Council has previously approved dates for the budget workshop and public hearings. When the public calendar was approved, the public hearing is scheduled for September 9 at a regularly scheduled city council meeting. However, if the proposed budget exceeds the lower of either the rollback or effective tax rate, two public hearings would be required. The first one on August 19 at a regularly scheduled council meeting, and the second one at the September 9 regularly scheduled city council meeting. Recommendation is that council acknowledges receipt of the proposed budget and consider public hearings for budget and proposed tax rate. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Move to acknowledge receipt of the 2013, 2014 proposed budget. And if one hearing is necessary, set that for September 9th. And if two hearings are necessary, August 19th and September 9th.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Before we go back and do item six, we're actually going to go into closed section in accordance with Texas Government Code, such after D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney pending litigation, City of Lewisville versus City of Farmers Branch and Camelot Landfield, Texas LP. Cause number 412, CV 00782, United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas, Sherman Division, and Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Application to obtain Municipal Solid Waste Permit Amendment, Permit Number 1312B. We're now clo- journey into closed session. We'll convene back into regular session. There is no action to be taken at this time on the closed session. We're going to go back to item six. It's consideration of ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 6, excuse me, Article 11, Sexually Oriented Businesses, Section 7-371, and Chapter 17, Section 17-31, Location Regulations for Sexually Oriented Businesses of the Lewisville City Code by clarifying the definition of nudity or state of nudity. Administrative comments, this police department recently investigated a complaint alleging that a local restaurant was being operated in violation of the sexually oriented business ordinance. As a result of this investigation, it was determined that the definition of nudity or a state of nudity should be amended to clarify that hottie paint or similar cover-ups do not constitute opaque coverings under the definition. Recommendation is that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. I do want to make it clear, and I did talk this with our city attorney, that this is not an ordinance or anything for any particular business or organization. This is simply a detailed clarification to an existing ordinance that the city of Lewisville has that pertains to all businesses within the city of Lewisville. Yeah, under, operated under this ordinance. Yes. Thank you, council. Okay, with that, I do have some cards, speaker cards here. I have one from Catherine Holliday. I'll ask everyone to limit your speaking to five minutes and you'll need to give your full name and address, if you will, for the record, please. And if you would, just reach up there and bend that microphone down so we can hear you, please, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Catherine Holliday. C.A.T.H.E.R.I.N.E. Holliday is H.O.L.L.I.D.A.Y. I live at 1444 Alt Staten Lane in Lewisville. I've lived in the city of Lewisville for 10 years. I've worked in the city of Lewisville for more than 10 years. And this is my first city council meeting, so...
We're glad to have you.
Thank you. I had a friend visiting a couple of weeks ago and we went shopping and she's from Ourstown and we drove past the Redneck Heaven and I pointed it out to her because it is such a funny name for a restaurant. And she said, "Yeah, I sure like to get a picture of that place, that sign." And I said, "Sure," pulled into the parking lot. And I was really surprised to see that there were young ladies serving out in the parking lot without any clothes on, or very few clothes on, let me put it that way. And I was, I was frankly quite shocked. She, however, was taking it all in stride and was walking around with her camera and taking pictures of everybody. So I just thought that, since I saw the article in the paper yesterday, that I would let you folks see what the people, the young ladies look like in the parking lot out on the side of I-35, in case you didn't know. And I brought three pictures.
Okay, if you want, you can give those to me.
In the past, I've seen a slide also out in front of the restaurant there, in between the Service Road and the median, a big blow-up slide with young ladies in bikinis sliding down the slide. And it's just, I think, pretty distracting for the drivers on I-35. I think it's, I think that it's just not the appropriate place to have scantily clad young ladies on the side of a highway. That was, that's all I had to say.
So I tell you what, you're saying that you're in favor of us passing this ordinance?
Yes, I am.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you very much, ma'am. We appreciate you coming to our meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Crystal and Jason White? If you will, give your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Crystal and Jason White. Crystal is K.R.I.S.T.A.L. and White, just like the color. And our address is 2111 Stein Way, Carrollton, Texas, 75007.
May I?
Give these to you?
Sure.
Yeah, and we have copies of the pictures for everybody. And I am here as a body painter. I've just recently started working with Redneck Heaven. Unfortunately, June 21st, I actually was not responsible for a lot of the body painting there. A lot of the waitresses had hired an outside professional to come in and they were not as professional as they should have been. And some of the coverings that they, some of the body painting, yes, I would say it was subpar. But the way that I operate, I, I want to work within your ordinances. I've been trying. I've been working at Arlington and also with Fort Worth. I've become familiar with your, your restrictions. And just recently, I also body painted at Arlington and they have a very similar ordinance to you as far as what needs to be covered up. So you can see what we did last week in Arlington, the kind of body painting that we did. I do consider it a form of art. I consider it a very beautiful form of art. If you've seen X-Men, you've seen Mystique. I mean, that was a movie and that was body painting and it was beautiful and it was very exciting. And yes, it's, it's interesting in a, you know, enticing way, but it's, it's also an art form. And so I'm also defending it as an art form. And I also say that there should be some intent considered when calling someone a sexually oriented business. I've been to Redneck Heaven as a customer several times. I really enjoy it. I enjoy the girls there. They're, I have a, somewhat of a mother bear instinct with them. They're very cute. They're very sweet. It's kind of funny to watch them run around. It looks like fifth graders at recess. They're playing duck, duck, goose. They're playing hula hoop. They're riding bicycles through the restaurant. They're not doing lap dances. There's not a pole anywhere in the restaurant. It's not lewd. It's not pornographic. I actually would feel more uncomfortable at certain other restaurants, but the way that they behave there, quite frankly, they act like kids. And yes, they're, they're dressed enticingly, but they're not acting accordingly. They're, I don't think they act in a sexually oriented way. But that would be my point.
Okay, thank you.
Said everything.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Raymond Daniels?
Hi, I'm Raymond Daniels, 625 East List Ridge Mall Drive, Department 1217. I'm speaking in opposition to this for a few reasons. One reason is kind of how she mentioned, she did it in Fort Worth and in Arlington as well. If you look at their city charters, they're very similar to what we have right now. They don't go as far as what we're proposing right here. Another thing that's been looked at is if it's qualified as a sexually oriented business, they may or may not. It seems like there's not certainty of whether it would be considered a sexually oriented business from the state perspective. Where if it is considered a sexually oriented business from the state perspective, there would be like $5 for every customer who goes in there for them to consider, to keep doing what they're doing. And obviously, when they had those kinds of pricing and the state law in mind, they didn't consider restaurants like Redneck Heaven to really be in that sort of same category as, say, a strip club. Because as a lady before me said, it's, if you ever go in there, it's really not a strip club at all. It's a lot more closer to a Hooters. If anything, the girls act more like kids. As far as the nature of the outfits, I think the last thing you mentioned, Mystique from X-Men, that's all body paint and stuff. It's a PG-13 movies. Very similar to what is there. Also, if you look at things such as Maxo Magazine or Stuff Magazine or Sports Military Swimsuit Edition, you see plenty of the same things there. They're not considered, they're not in the same section as Playboy because it's not sexually oriented. Also, the big, one of the big things I'm really curious about really is why it's really coming up. Have you guys, I'm kind of curious like how many complaints have been gotten from this? Because I mean, just to me, not to say that people who don't go there shouldn't, can't have an opinion as well, but something tells me that the vast majority of people who are opposing this are probably people who would never go in there in the first place and are probably people who definitely are still won't go in there even if this ordinance passes. And again, going back to the state law and not sharing, being sure if we're going to be stuck with doing what they're going to have to do, the $5 state law fee for every customer that comes in there, I'd like to ask the council and the mayor to table this item until we get more clear information on that. Now, that is all I have for you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. There are two cards filled out from people that did not wish to speak, but, and you checked in support. Jennifer Southwell is in support of us passing this item. And then Don Frazier, Jennifer Southwell is 995 Downey Drive of Lewisville. She is in support of us passing this item. And Don Frazier, who is 1444 Ashton Lane, looks like, and he is also in support of us passing this item. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve is written.
Have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve is written. Have a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor. I do have a couple of issues with this. First issue is that this is the second attempt that we've had at this ordinance in a two-year period of time. And this is going basically directly against the business model that has been very successful in our city for many years. That had been successfully operating prior to any of our ordinance changes. Another issue that I have with this is this is actually a stricter ordinance, a stricter issue than we have at our current family public swimming pools. As a rule, I don't like to govern and dictate how a business does their business and govern how they operate their business. I, I do believe, as one of the speakers had stated, that if customers go in and they don't like what's going on in that business, well, they have the right not to go back to that business. Those are the issues that I have with this ordinance. Having said all that, I'm going to vote in favor of the ordinance change, and it's very simple. The, the lady that had produced us with the body paint, the, the painting that she does is drastically different. And I would go as far to say that her body painting, these pictures that I see, would be legal with the ordinance that we're passing tonight. The other pictures that were presented to us from another speaker is the reason why I'm voting opposed, voting in favor of this because those pictures are going way too far, way too far. And I, I support the business doing, doing business, operating successfully in Lewisville. If they could operate under our new court, current ordinance with that body painting, and, and I, and I would love for the public to see those pictures, I think it's very well done. I would not like the public to see those other pictures. And I do believe that they have taken it too far and that, that in my mind is unacceptable. Having said that, I will be in favor of passing this ordinance.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Mayor. I am opposed to this ordinance. I was opposed to the ordinance in 2011 when this came out. It, it does go too far. If you use this same deal at the Lewisville Swimming Pools, I think you would have to make some arrest or whatever the, whatever would happen there to someone that was, would be outside of this, this ordinance here. So I'm, I'm against it. It does have to have a four-fifths vote to pass without having, need to get legal on this one. Three readings? There'd be three readings?
It would be three readings without four votes.
Okay. With that in mind, I am opposed to it. I will be voting for it so we don't have to go through the three different readings.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I think you want to address something about the...
Well, there's two things I want to clarify. One, we happen to have a business that seems to be stretching the limits of the ordinance, but the ordinance is not drafted to deal with that business. It's to deal with stretching of the ordinance regardless of the business that might be attempting to do so. The ordinance specifies that nudity involves not just the female breast, but other body parts, including bare buttock, male genitals, female genitals. And I don't think there's many people who are going to argue that we should be allowing people to be in a commercial business with painted male genitals and not consider that a sexually oriented business. This is not what we do at the pools. We don't allow people to show these things at the pools. One might quibble a little bit with what is allowed on the female breast, but clearly the rest of the ordinance is not allowed.
That is exactly what I'm talking about.
Well, I think...
It is. I wouldn't talk about any of the other ones and I, I believe the council understands that.
Well, no, I think there, there is obviously some other parts of the ordinance that is being not followed at our swimming pools.
I would like to know what those are, about male genitals and female genitals?
As you said earlier, a, a bare buttock.
Well, again, this applies to commercial businesses, so if you want to...
You made, you used the example of our public swimming pool and that that's not the case.
You can, you can, well, it may not be the case for that one thing and parts of the female breast, but it certainly is that case for the other three items on there. And again, we're trying to make sure that people aren't exploiting that for some other purpose.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Did you have anything else?
No.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Mayor.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you, counselor.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, amending Chapter 7, Article 11, Sexually Oriented Businesses, Section 7, Section 7-371, and Chapter 17, Section 17-31, Location Regulations for Sexually Oriented Businesses of the city of Lewisville, of the city, of the Lewisville City Code by clarifying the definition of nudity, providing a repealer, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, counselor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to reports. Lisa, how you got? Anything? Nothing? Bob? Chief? Linda? Chief?
Chief?
No, sir.
Carol? We're getting a little rain out there.
Yes, mayor, we are. The rain we've gotten has only raised to like about an inch, but it's, it's, everybody's helpful.
And I want to thank you all, you're people who are working very diligently with those in the neighborhoods where we're redoing streets, I believe it's Westwood Two?
Yes.
Edition right now. They've gone, and we had a couple of comments, but they are very happy now, and we appreciate all the effort that they're doing to make sure people are able to get in and out as soon as possible, their hopes. We thank them for that. If you'll pass that along, I appreciate it. Donna?
Yes, sir.
Brenda?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Ferris?
Not a...
Mr. Backus? Councilman Durham?
Mayor, the only question I have is, when is it going to quit raining? This is really, it's nice to have this, and I wish we could have these temperatures the whole year.
Oh, yeah, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, mayor.
Councilman Tierney?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I'd like to just remind everyone that we have our last of our Big Ideas Gathering. That'll be this Thursday, July eighteenth, from six to eight PM at the Savage, the Glenmore Savage Community Room at the Lewisville Municipal Annex. If you don't know where that is, just go to the library, they'll direct you. I would like to encourage folks to bring your kids. We've had a lot of folks who've been involved in these that are folks that are involved in the community pretty regularly. The last one was held at the Senior Center, so we had a lot of our senior folks that actually came out. But, you know, it's 2025. Our kids are living a lot more of this than we are. So I really would encourage you to take an opportunity to bring them out, let them have their say. They might shock us with some of the creative ideas that they could come up with with where we should be in 2025. That's all I have, mayor.
Thanks, sir. Mr. King?
No, sir.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. Got some MCL things going on. Sounds of Lewisville Summer Concert Series continues this week, wraps up next week. This week, we have Escape, which is a Journey tribute band, so a lot of people, I think, will want to enjoy that. Hopefully, the weather will let us do it, and if not, we go inside, we have it in the auditorium, so don't give up just because there is rain in the sky. You can still enjoy a concert either way. And the following week, Craig Parker, and, I'm going to be honest, I'm not familiar with Craig Parker, so I don't know if the assistant city manager would like to tell me anything I don't know, or...
It's an Elvis impersonator.
It's an Elvis impersonator. So Craig is in the house on Tuesday next week. Stage shows, we've got Lewisville Summer Musicals, All Shook Up, sounds like an Elvis thing going on here. There's three performances, July nineteenth through twentieth, that's by Texas Family Musicals. Got Shrek the Musical, July twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh by The Acting Studio, and Roy Orbison Experience is coming up in August on the second and the third, and again, three performances. The Visual Arts League's always going to have their Friday night acoustic jam that you can come enjoy, or you can bring your guitar, or mandolin, or banjo, or harmonica, or, I don't know, rubber band or something, and join them because they let almost anybody play anything. And that's not to say it isn't good, I'm just saying that it is open for you to join them. And then Visual Arts League has its Fresh Ideas Exhibit, that's an annual event that's already on display at the MCL Grand, and they'll be there through August the tenth. So additional information, go to mclgrand.com and enjoy it. And I also encourage folks to join us for the 2025 planning. And I just want to add in one last thing. I am really, really pleased to say that we got through July the fourth, and not one person made it, you know, didn't make it through their experience out on Lake Lewisville, and that's something to be very, very excited about. So let's hope we can continue that. But that was just such a relief. So that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councillor? Julie? Officer, once again, we do appreciate you being here at each meeting, and we appreciate everything you do each day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. I just want to, once again, congratulate and commend Boy Scout Troop nine-one-six-eight on their twenty-fifth year anniversary. It was very exciting to see all those young men, and all the adults that had worked with them over the past twenty-five years. You could see the joy in their face from knowing that they had a part of the scout trip that's been here for twenty-five years. And also want to congratulate and thank everyone who volunteered to be on our boards and commission who were sworn in tonight. With that, we'll be, once again, convening into closed session under section, in accordance with Texas Government Code, such chapter D, section five-five-one point zero-seven-two, property acquisition, and section five-five-one point zero-eight-seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We'll now convene into closed session.